Meeting here, would you like to call the roll in?
Ms. Salee?
Here.
Mr. Lecliter?
Here.
Mr. Reiner?
Here.
Mayor Keenan?
Here.
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
I'm Mr. Peterson.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Okay, and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Tim, will you lead us in that, please? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation on our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everybody. Appreciate your patience. We have citizen comments, and I see we have a number of people at this juncture have signed up. And Mr. Maurer, I see you're on the agenda here. Welcome.
Your Honor, and I do take that word very seriously, you know that, don't you? Members of council and members of the management. I want to hum an old tune that I've played up here a number of times with a little different accompaniment. Now, the, everybody knows that a lot of people are talking about this city. In the state, in Columbus, even in the world, and the word "global" as a matter of fact is beginning to be attached to the name. And now I'm not straying into some of the agenda leading because that's going to come up later. But I am astounded by the fact that you don't take, exploit, that you don't exploit a situation in this city. Instead of, if we're going to be called a global city, instead of being a branded town with some Irish associations, it is quite possible to, to give some glistening lights to an idea that this is a global city. And I'm referring, of course, to the mix of ethnic groups in this city. You know, if I were to run for office of City Council here, and when? There's one thing I would do. I would, there are maybe, which you don't know, and if you don't know it, you might test the water sometimes. There are pockets, and some strong ones, of disaffection and of dissatisfaction and of resentment in this city. And it stems from the fact that it's branded as an Irish enclave of some sort, but there are representatives of other ethnic groups, and they are big ones. And if they, and I've been in, I've been in touch with them in any organized way, but whenever the subject comes up, they are very annoyed that it is branded as a one ethnic city, whereas it is multiple. I, I, I'm not running for office, but if I did and wanted to win, I would go to these groups and I'd be in. But I'm not going to do that because I have too many irons in the fire and I'm too hard to keep under control as it is. So, but they are there. And, you know, the artist who was here the time that we discussed the 161-33 interchange, he picked it out right away and saw that there was an artificiality about it and realized that this could be stripped away at some time, and he modified the reference to the irons around here, you know, and the walls of the, of the interchange there. So, I would really ask you to look again. And, you know, the matter of having one festival per year, when you could have eight annual festivals per year or nine, if you picked up all the ethnic groups, equivalent to or maybe in numbers larger than the Irish sector of it, the American Irish sector of it. So, I would really ask you at some point to think about multiplying the festivals and really turn this into a globally tinged city. Because people out there in the far reaches of the globe are going to sense the artificiality in some of it. And they can distinguish between authentic Irish and fake Irish. So, as I said, I sung my old song up here, and I don't want to be driven to run for council. I'm not going to do it. I can't and won't. I have too much else to do. Not because I look down on your jobs. They're very, very serious jobs, and I admire you most of the time, all of you, most of the time for the concentration that you put into them. But do think about that.
Mr. Maurer?
Yeah.
Something to think about, and I don't know if you follow this, but, and we're really working on this already, but were you familiar with Dublin being rated as the only creative class city outside the east and west coast?
I know that, and you referred to that last time. And I know that it's getting that sort of reputation. But it could be larger and more powerful than that.
That's pretty powerful, really, because this is only a city of forty-some thousand people.
Yeah, well, I know. And also at the moment realize that you're concentrating on economic and technological development. And I'll get in, I'll get in.
But that also, that also included the sciences, the arts, as a city that has the highest percentage of intelligentsia leading in business and those other fields. So, we may be-
That's good.
We may be going over to that direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Maurer. We have Karen Lintala. Come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Karen Lintala. It's a Finnish name.
Sorry.
And I live at 5835 Dunglady Court, over just south of Muirfield. I've lived in Dublin since 1990, no, 99, right before the Y2K stuff. Anyway, I came here to talk tonight about the Coda issue and moving the park and ride. There were some things printed that my co-writers on the bus wanted you to know. I understand that more than half of this problem is really owned by the Coda people and finding a suitable place. But we would like everyone to understand that there are well over 100 people riding the bus downtown. We are professional people, working at the State, Nationwide, AUP, the banks. When the bus comes in the morning, it is on the marquee saying it's out of service. There are no people coming from Columbus, because the bus isn't even in service. And that was one of the things people were concerned about, and I just want to allay anybody's fears. The lot until the last month was beautifully landscaped, well-maintained. If I were to go look at it now, I wouldn't want it in my backyard either, because they took out everything, the beautiful trees. But I am hoping that whatever location that we have, that it will be just as nice as the one we have today. We also want it to be close to getting on Route 33. We don't want to have to drive 20 minutes to get a bus that's going to take, it takes us 25 minutes to get downtown. So, I can leave right now at quarter of seven, take the 7:00 AM bus and be to my desk by just after 7:30. The reason I take the bus, I worked for Honda for 25 years, and I am in the position of supporting a grandchild going to college, and I was a retiree that had to be let go because of something in Washington. Had to find a job. The only reason I took one downtown was I could ride the bus. I don't want to deal at my age with the horrible traffic jams, the people who have no patience. And I feel safe on the bus. I know people are safer than I'm not nervous about driving downtown in rush hour. I was used to the Speedway on 33, because everybody was going the same way. So, basically, I just want to assure you that there's not a lot of traffic within five minutes of being left off in the evening. We've all cleared the lot. It's, there's no one ever there bothering us. It's in an out-of-the-way place. The cars are safe. Never had any damage. I've car-pooled and parked in other places, and the wounds on my car are there to show what happens if you're not in a safe, out-of-the-way place. And if I've forgotten anything, you guys.
We appreciate your input. We thank you. We do continue to work very closely with Coda, and we've offered a number of different alternatives, and that's in the middle of those discussions right now, so.
And we're also trying to tell Coda, please represent us. Somehow, they thought there weren't very many of us, and there's lots of us.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Annie Matthews, welcome. If you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Annie Matthews. I live at 7828 Brandon Way Drive in Dublin. I've lived there since 1992. Also, I don't want to repeat everything Karen just said. We just want to make sure that we represent the people who lived on the west side of Dublin who actually ride the bus. I've ridden the bus since, for 10 years, going to Nationwide. My husband works at Nationwide, so it makes no sense for us, for both of us to, you know, ride, drive downtown and park there. So, what I do is that we sometimes drive together, and then one of us take the bus home, just makes it convenient for the kids and stuff like that. So, we also, I just, another thing I wanted to bring up, I don't want to repeat everything Karen said, but I do want to say that we also, during the summer months, a lot of students, interns, OSU students also ride the bus because many of them don't have cars. Nationwide hires a lot of interns that live in the Dublin area, that go to Dublin Kaufman, Jerome, who are OSU students, Miami students, who we hire as interns at Nationwide, who don't have cars. So, what they do is that they ride the bus and their parents or friends or something pick them up at different times of the day. So, it just makes it really convenient. It is, there is no, there's very little parking downtown. So, I think Coda is basically working with some of the, like Nationwide and AUP and other companies downtown to give the riders incentive to go downtown, so that they're riding the bus instead of, you know, driving downtown, because there is very little parking downtown. And you have to park almost like a mile away to come next to Nationwide. So, it's just easier for us to ride the bus. It's very convenient. And I would invite all, any of you to actually ride the bus and see how wonderful it is, because there's only one stop at Griggs, and then it's Nationwide or somewhere downtown. It's amazing. And I've done so for 10 years. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Thank you for your input. John Hart. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, thank you. John Hart, 7070 Gordon Farms Parkway. First of all, thank you for the time to speak this evening. I have, I'm here tonight, I have a couple of questions about the development review process in general in the city. As a few of you know, I've been a, had the good fortune of being a practicing architect in central Ohio for a number of years, and I've developed a number of things, or designed a couple of things in Dublin and other communities around the region. And throughout that experience, there's been a fairly consistent policy that I've seen, not only in Dublin but in other communities, where no permits would normally be issued for any kind of construction or earthmoving until the formal development approval process had been entirely completed and the gall valve had dropped on either the Planning and Zoning Commission or City Council or ART or whatever the approval process is. And when we look around the community here today, as some of the previous speakers indicated, we have trees being cut down at the Coda, the existing Coda's location. We have sites being cleared, earth being moved, buildings being torn down on a number of sites around the community where the development review process has not yet been completed. And my question, well, let me, let me give you a little back, background for the purpose of the question. I've received personally a number of phone calls in recent weeks from friendly colleagues in the development industry who frankly aren't inclined to come here themselves and ask a question like this. But there are folks in the development community who are curious if that's the new norm. And wondering if there has indeed been a formal and deliberate decision to allow site clearing and things of that nature to occur prior to zoning approval in the city of Dublin, or if that's not the case. And the question I would like to ask is if, if we have not made that decision, if that's not the new norm, why is it being allowed to occur? And if it is the new norm, I'm curious why there wasn't more discussion about it, because it seems like clearing sites, in some cases wooded sites, would be a fundamental policy decision and a departure from the way we've developed in the past.
I suspect you're addressing primarily the buildings north of Oscars in the Bridge Street West District.
That's one of them, exclusively.
Certainly most noticeable. Dana?
I'll address just a couple of those. I, I've not had such phone calls, but I could, I could see the appearance of that. In the case of Coda that was brought up, we had a right of entry to go on Coda to remove certain trees. Some of those were scrub trees in the fence rows. Some of those were within landscape areas. That had to do with getting out ahead of the Indiana bat situation. So, as you're probably extremely familiar with, John.
I am.
So, a lot of people are moving quickly to get out ahead of that issue for the construction season. So, that would answer the tree situation. And it's not just in that particular area of the east and west side of the river, but in other areas of the city as well. We do have a history-
Dana, you might explain that once you go past that date, you're done for the year.
Yeah, when you go past the-
March 31st.
April.
March 31st.
March 31st or April 1st, you cannot fall trees until like after October. And of course, as you know, then the construction season's over. So, you've lost a year of construction season, number one.
Which also speaks to roadways as well.
Roadway improvements, right-of-way improvements, where we anticipate right-of-way improvements. A lot of that's happening on the, on the east side of the river where we anticipate right-of-way work. So, that's, that answers that particular question. The other thing we do have a history of is incremental permitting, such as site permits, followed by foundation permits, followed by building permits. So, sometimes those are, those are issued in increments like that. If, if you wanted to send me an email or give me a phone call on specific projects, I could go to the Building Department and find out about whether or not those permits released in those increments or not.
I appreciate that.
That also goes to demolition permits as well.
Yeah. I'm, I'm very familiar with all that. I just have never seen it occur. Most people have never seen it occur prior to a zoning certificate being issued, and that seems like a departure.
I, I would suggest it's not, but we could sit down and go through, I would, before I would make such a statement, I would want to sit down and go through the permits and review them with you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Brings us to the consent agenda. You all had, had a chance to review that. Does any council member have any item they'd like to remove? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the actions for the five items that are listed? Some moved. Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion, Ann?
Ms. Salee? Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber? Mr. Peterson? Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
And Mayor Keenan?
Yes. Ordinance 29-15.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary advanced documents, excuse me, to acquire 0.055 acre more or less permanent easement, 0.023 acre more or less temporary easement from Katina Spanos, the property located at 8700 Highland Croway Road, for construction of a shared use path connection.
Mr. Hammersmith?
Yes, members of council, this is the fifth of six needed easements for the Highland Croway shared use path along the east side of Highland Croway Road, north of Dublin Jerome High School. This one, this evening, from Katina Spanos for both a permanent and temporary easement. We have settled at her counter offer. Staff recommends this evening that you authorize us to settle with her at the counter offer. We have one more to go on this particular shared use path that we are still working on. But with that, we will be, I will be glad to answer any questions.
Getting close to getting it done.
We're getting it.
Counsel, any questions? Hearing none. Ann?
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance 32-15.
Authorizing appropriation of a 5.120 acre more or less fee simple, right-of-way, of which 1.308 acres are located within present road occupied, and a 0.387 acre more or less temporary easement from BPACQ LLC and Tim Hortons as lessor of the property. For the property located at 6490 Riverside Drive, construction of a roundabout at the intersection of State Route 161 and Riverside Drive, and relocation of Riverside Drive to the east, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Reedler?
Good evening. We continue to work with Tim Hortons, and we believe we've reached resolution on this matter. As a result, we've amended the ordinance. We added a new section two to authorize the city manager to enter into any necessary agreements to effect that settlement. It's our understanding that Tim Hortons hasn't selected a new location as of yet, but we would recommend approval by emergency tonight so that we can settle this matter and get on with our road construction.
Very good. Any council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to treat as an emergency.
Sir?
On the motion?
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Salee? Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 33-15.
And we need the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the ordinance.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zerker?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gerber?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Again. Ordinance 33-15.
Implementing sections 37-35.65 through 37-35.70 of the Ohio revised code, establishing and describing the boundaries of the Bridge Street District Community Reinvestment Area, designating a housing officer, housing officer to administer the program, creating a Community Reinvestment Housing Council and declaring an emergency.
Very good. Ms. Mumma?
Good evening, members of council. As Ann just outlined, we are requesting an emergency approval of ordinance 33-15, which would establish the Bridge Street District Community Reinvestment Area. As outlined in the staff memo and is presented at last week's first reading, this ordinance would first adopt the housing survey that was completed of the area. It would define the boundaries of the Bridge Street District CRA, which, as you can see on the slide listed above, would match the defined area of the Bridge Street District in and of itself. It would decide, define the incentive that could be provided within the boundaries of the CRA. And staff is recommending a 100%, up to a 100% property tax exemption for up to 15 years for new construction of multiple unit residential, which would be defined as two or more residential dwelling units, and of commercial and retail facilities. And then finally, it would create a Bridge Street District Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council, of which those members would be appointed at some future point in time. As I explained in last week's first reading, this legislation does not authorize the incentive to any particular owner within the Bridge Street District. A separate agreement would need to be entered between the city and the developer or property owner in order to obtain this incentive. So, therefore, it would be on a case-by-case basis. We are requesting emergency approval this evening. There is, once this Bridge Street District CRA is approved, we are required to advertise its approval for a two-week period, after which time we need to submit the application to the Ohio Development Services Agency for their review. And they have 30 days to consider that application. So, that would, if we follow the timeframe with emergency approval this evening, we would expect approval by the Development Services Agency in mid to late June, pardon me. And then once approved by the Development Services Agency, then we could work with property owners, and they could come forward requesting a separate agreement to obtain this, this incentive.
Very good. Counsel, questions?
Couple of quick questions.
Mr. Peterson?
Angel, it says that this designates a housing officer to administer the program. Who is that?
That is Colleen Gilger, is our Director of Development.
Okay. And I also noticed that it, staff does not recommend including single-family homes. What would the reason be for?
That is correct. Within the Bridge Street District, our goal is to provide incentives to spur the type of zoning and development that is outlined in the Bridge Street District Vision Plan. So, that's where you have commercial, retail, multifamily types of, types of facilities.
But, but if we let, as I understand this, in actual, to actually enter into an agreement, that's a subsequent negotiation with the city.
That is correct.
And if we say that they're exempt, then we could never consider it. If we could say we discourage single-family, I'm just wondering, because there's a bunch of pictures in here of single-family homes.
Right, because-
And if someone came in with a proposal to build some great new, really-
So, by outlining in this ordinance the type of incentive that could be offered by restricting it to any residential that is over two dwell, two or more dwellings, it would exempt or not permit a single-family property owner to come and take advantage of this exemption, unless they were going to be constructing something with more than two residential units or more. The housing that was included in the housing survey is simply provided because as a requirement, when we conduct the housing survey, we have to identify one or two houses within the defined area of the proposed CRA, which have shown a level of disinvestment, where there hasn't been investment. We've cited some examples of parcels that have had zoning violations, and you can just see that there's been a decline in value in the property.
That's a requirement to form the CRA.
That is correct.
Yes. Any other questions?
No, thank you, Ann.
Counsel?
Yes, I have some questions, Mr. Mayor. To follow up on Greg's, with respect, it looks like a housing authority or housing council. What's the function of that council? What will it do?
I believe they annually, every year, would review any agreement that is entered into between a property owner and the city, and just make sure the intended development occurred. So, they meet annually similar to our Tax Incentive Review Council.
I, I would add that in the current CRA that we have, for many years, the Housing Council has convened. I personally have been the housing officer in that case. Requires you to do annual inspections of properties in the area to ensure that investment is ongoing and improving. You report that back to the council and the county auditor is present as well as part of the reporting requirement of the CRA.
Be very similar.
The idea is to ensure forward progress and investment in the area.
Be similar to your annual TIF kind of reviews where the auditor sits in and we have a-
Correct. And usually that's married up to the, the term, what we call the-
Tax Incentive Review Council.
Sorry. And those two councils meet simultaneous to each other.
You know, and I see these tax abatements, and that's what they really are, that they are here all over central Ohio. What are they ordinarily? Are they 70%? Do they 100%? How does, let's, I guess, what's the going rate out there?
I'm going to ask our legal counsel, Greg Daniels, who has done a number of these deals with other municipalities, to provide his perspective on that.
Sure. Give us your name and address there for the record, Greg. Sorry.
Sure, no problem. Greg Daniels, 235 Luke Court. In general, the areas are typically established as a maximum up to 15 years and up to 100%. That establishes what the cities can grant. And then, on a case-by-case basis, the actual incentive is determined. And that's based on project economics and other factors the cities take into account.
And that's getting to the case-by-case basis that you mentioned in your presentation. Okay. What's the emergency?
Well, the emergency is taking into consideration that we do have to have the notice provided to the Ohio Development Services Agency, and that could take up to 30 days. So, when we brought this forward, we wanted to put that out there, because if Development Services Agency took the full 30 days after we advertised it for two weeks, this could put any particular developer into late June or July before they could even come forward with a request for, for an exemption under the CRA. And as part of obtaining the CRA, developers need to not have vertical construction, because once that occurs, then you start to lose the value of the abatement that it creates.
You know, I've made it very clear, I'm not too fond of emergency legislation, particularly in this area. And I'm quite sold that another two weeks was, this could be harmful. But, and particularly because, you know, I think there's some policy issues here. You know, with respect to, I think this council needs to decide, when are these, are going to, when is this tool going to be utilized? Are we going to be shopping 100% all the time? Are we going to be doing 70? What type of properties will be involved? You know, that sort of thing. In an ideal world, it would have been nice to have a little bit more time and have that in place before we run this through. So, I appreciate the fact that these are good, don't get me wrong, these are good tools. I understand it. And, and I'm sure everybody who comes in here is going to want one, just like they do in Columbus and Worthington and other places. And that seems to be the game right now. But I would like for this council to consider the policy ramifications with this, with respect to only to with, how are we going to utilize this tool? So, maybe, Angel, is it possible that you could come back with some ideas for us, so that we are not necessarily negotiating it ourselves by each developer that comes along, that we work on this side? We have some rules up front and go from there?
We can certainly take a look at that. The only thing that I would offer is each individual project has its own financing merits and comes with its own requests and- We can certainly take a look at that. The only thing that I would offer is each individual project has its own financing merits, and comes with its own requests and needs, and therefore, it's not really a one-size-fits-all. So I think that there, regardless, if we do come up with some sort of template to use, I think that there will need to be some consideration given to the particular project in front of you. What it is bringing to the table, what it's generating, is it accomplishing what its council's intent to accomplish with respect to the Bridge Street Vision, and that has to play a component into it, because you could have a developer that comes in and necessitates much more public improvements or investment than another developer, just based on their product type, depending on what infrastructure improvements are needed in the area. So it's hard to say today what everybody might need, but I understand your point.
Yeah, and I understand that point, too. It's just that, you know, I seem to be sitting up here, emergency legislation after emergency legislation, piecemeal after piecemeal, and I prefer to have a little bit more of a clearer vision going forward.
Sure.
Angel, remind me how the economic development agreement folds into this CRA? Or does it, I mean, it's...
Well...
Isn't that all part and parcel to the whole discussion?
That is correct. So there would be a separate agreement that would have the CRA, and then, obviously, of course, the development agreement that would outline all the tools being used. So I think if we were to kind of plan this out, there wouldn't be a separate CRA agreement that would be done at a separate period of time than a development agreement, because in my mind, you would not want to authorize the CRA agreement if you didn't already have a development agreement, or weren't concurrently making a decision on the development agreement at the same time.
Yeah, I would add, and it's important to keep in mind, that what essentially you're doing is adding a toolbox, a tool to your toolbox. That's really what this does. I appreciate the concern for the emergency nature of this. I know that, you know, CRA is something that's, that we've kicked around in Dublin for many years. We've got one in place. We've kicked around the notion of it as a tool off and on for many years, because frankly, in some cases, I will, and I've shared this with council before, as your Economic Development Director, we've been in a significant disadvantage in competing for jobs and projects. We have held back on leveraging this throughout the city, throughout the Commercial District, as a tool to compete. Have we competed aggressively, and have we competed well within the region? I would say yes, even without this tool. However, we're in a different game now. We're in a game of redevelopment, and it's much harder rowing and to do projects in the world of redevelopment. And this area that's defined, if you look at it, and I know you have, when you look at this, it really lends itself to redevelopment. That's just where this six percent geographic area of the city is. And I would argue, this is, not argue, but I would suggest, this is probably not even twenty percent of your overall commercial landmass. And I will tell you, sitting here, it's not to say I won't come back and ask you for a CRA somewhere else in the Commercial District as we continue to compete. I don't want it to be the norm any more than we have before. Just because I'm the new city manager doesn't mean all of a sudden, I get the tool that I've been, you know, contemplating in the past, but I know the reality of redevelopment, and this is the first time that we've really struggled and tried to tackle redevelopment in the city, and that's just where we are in the life cycle as a city. And that's where other cities, like Columbus and others, who have leveraged these very successfully, because that's what they focus on. Now, you know, you could argue New Albany, where they had green field development, has been using CRAs ever since they started. That's a fifty percent, a flat fifty percent, fifteen is a policy. You get it, no matter who shows up. I don't advocate that policy. I would never recommend that to you, because that's a guarantee. I think you want to, as Angel suggests, always look at each of these on the merits. I think that scope, scale, impact of a project has a lot to do with how much you would want to leverage into that, and leverage that, take that tool out of the toolbox and leverage it. As to the emergency nature, again, you know, I would only, and I understand the issue of only waiting two more weeks. I appreciate that, respect that completely. I just want council and the public to know, we don't like emergency legislation either. It's not something that we use and abuse. We are up against some time constraints. I think you could clearly argue safety, health, and welfare relative to our economic engine, and how that funds our ability to provide safety service and so forth. So I don't think it's a stretch to ask for an emergency, but I certainly just wanted to say, I appreciate and respect your concern on that, and it's not something that we want to do all the time, so...
Dana, you know, and I, you know, I mean, I understand this is a good tool. It's going to be needed, it's necessary. I'm just trying to get my arms around, okay, at what cost?
Yes, sir, I understand. Right points.
It's not a determinate factor, whether it's, you know, yes or no on a vote, it's just, I think going forward, I think it's wise business to understand those things.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
I don't think you'd get any argument from any of us. We're all going to look at the merits of every deal that comes forward, but the way I view this is, it's a tool in the toolbox that we very much need, and we want to make sure that we have it ready to go when we need it.
I see it as a...
And that's how I view this, I don't know.
You're in competition with a heck of a lot of other entities, which I move around in all day long in my job, and if you want to get this done, and if you want to move with what's going on in the rest of this country, you got to pick this up a little bit, because I think we have been lagging in some of this, and we usually, used to be the cutting-edge city for all pretty much novel ideas and legislation, but now, I don't see that anymore. I see us falling behind, I see a lot of cities already doing this, and they're already in process, so dragging our feet isn't really going to help, help us stay in the competitive position we've always been in.
Okay, anybody else?
Just real quick, are these agreements assignable? Meaning, if we cut a deal with one developer, made an arrangement, can they sell that to some other developer?
It depends how the deal is structured. Typically, it requires city council consent for future assignments.
And if the deal falls apart, do we claw back the taxes that were not paid?
That can be a feature of the deal, depending on whether the deal can support that.
And just one last question. Do the specifics of the deal come in with the agreement? Like, what do we, what typically would we know about the project when we're asked to consider this arrangement?
You would know the size of the project, the job impact of the project, the estimated amount of abated taxes, the number of years, the percent exempted. All of that would require city council approval of the agreement itself, and all of that is baked into each agreement.
So this is at the purely economic stage?
You'd have a pro forma...
You don't see drawings and things like that?
The CRA agreement itself does not require that. Through the other processes the city has, and getting up to the point of approving an entire development, those other processes would handle those aspects of the development.
And do they run along at the same time, or does one come before the...
They typically run the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I just want to say, you know, I think it's valuable to have this tool for the reasons mentioned by our city manager and finance director, and, you know, we may or may not use it. I don't want to adopt the New Albany model. You know, it seems to me to, well, I'll stop there. I don't want to criticize one of our peers. But, you know, I think it's important to understand that, you know, we're not obligated to use this tool. We may or we may not, and over the course of development within this Bridge Street District, which will occur over many, many years, you know, the market's going to evolve, you know? We may want to use the tool, we may not want to use the tool, we may want to use it to twenty-five percent, we may want to use it to seventy-five percent, we may want to use it to a hundred percent. I mean, it's just going to depend on the circumstances and what it is we're trying to encourage at that particular time. So anyway, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple of public testimony at this time. I see, Mr. Mayor, you've signed up for this thirty-three dash fifteen?
Yes, just a, you identified who was the officer. Where do the members of this council come from?
There are two appointments that are made by the mayor, and this is per statute, two council appointments and one planning commission appointment.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Herring?
Good evening. My name is Scott Herring. I live at thirty-two eighty Lilly Mar Court, which is just off of Martin Road, back lot of my house, above the Bridge Street District. I guess I'm curious tonight if this vote, or if this works sort of like how the Planning and Zoning Commission does it, if there's an opportunity to modify the ordinance before it's voted on. There's already some good discussion here tonight among yourselves, or if you simply have to table it and send it back. I was at the city council meeting last week and received the Bridge Street brief document, and I read through it, and as I look at this community reinvestment area, I think that the vote should be no. And the reasons are, this is too broad in scope. It incentivizes new retail development and the moldy family, which sounds to be apartments. I think it really is a tax increase on other property owners throughout Washington Township and Franklin County, as funds are withheld from these parcels, as the rest of the folks have to take this up. And the fourth note I made was, it's not an emergency. So just to elaborate a little bit, I do understand that redeveloping land is more costly than new development, but I don't like the idea in this, that because one or two houses have been identified somewhere in the Bridge Street corridor, that that could allow another parcel somewhere in the district to be redeveloped and then receive a property tax abatement. And I might be more receptive to this, and this is why I ask if it can be modified. I can understand if a distressed property is identified, and then there was an incentive to redevelop that parcel, and maybe even an adjacent parcel. But as I looked at the map here, the Bridge Street District, that's over two miles from Metro Place out to Sawmill, and if I understand this, because one or two parcels was found somewhere in the district, that opportunities could exist anywhere in the district, then that seemed too broad to me. Second, the middle paragraph on the back page made the mention of including retail, and I don't want to be subsidizing new retail, especially if it's tearing down existing retail, and someone gets an abatement to build new retail. And maybe I don't understand all the documents, this is not my domain, but as a citizen, as I read this, I was kind of confused on that. Certainly, the track record of retail in the Bridge Street District has not been strong. Third, the brief also mentioned about the city's desire for large-scale and more comprehensively-planned mixed-use development, and that's the high-density housing. And over the last three or four years, as I've attended these meetings, there's been a lot of discussion about, please bring the apartments in high-density. More residents means more services will be required, and specifically, I'm thinking of the firefighting and EMS by Washington Township, and all the other services by Franklin County. So if I understand this, this is a property tax abatement, which means that these entities would receive less revenue, but yet potentially have to serve more services? So if that's the case, then I'm really not interested in it. On the mark of the emergency, yeah, I don't know. This just sounds like a handout. I will say this, I went to a sales seminar a long time ago, and they said, don't discount your price, don't sell yourself short. I think we are Dublin, and I think we've got tremendous resources here. What does puzzle me is that development hasn't occurred, and if it's not occurred, I don't know that throwing some money at it is really what we need. I think we need to look within, and I just wonder if the development is slow because developers take issue with other things. Maybe it's a restrictive zoning, maybe some codes could be rescinded. For years and years, I've heard a lot of debate about our sign policy. Recently, I attended a planning and zoning commission where the Tuller Flats, they needed so many waivers because there's competing codes, and they conflicted one another. I sat in the audience, and I thought, this is crazy. I don't know that we need this many rules. So anyway, I would ask that you vote no, or table this and take it back, and change this around. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it's undeniable that much of that district is in disrepair, the shopping center over there in particular, just a handful of tenants. This is all part of the tool and why we're entering into this. And we've gone round and round on this tax issue over and over and over, and we believe that we've made good progress with the schools and the other entities we've had conversations with, so...
Well, it's not like these developers aren't going to pay any fees.
And these are case-by-cases, as Angel pointed out, so there's no handout given here. This is, again, this is the first step. So with that, if there's no other council discussion, is there a motion to treat this as an emergency?
Mike, I just want to say that I'm in favor of these tools. I just don't like how we got here, and that's a far different issue. So, you know, I'll make that clear to all you before you try to remind me that what this tool does, I'm very familiar with it.
I understand.
You know, I just would want to say that it's a new, it's a different day than it's been in Dublin. This is a different area. It's not ever going to be single-family housing. It's not, it was never intended to be that, really. And the tools that are available to us, we've been fortunate, really, not to always have to invoke on those tools. But now, because they're, we're developing an area that's differently than we've ever developed before, and it calls for us using different kind of tools than we've used before. And we look, and we've talked about this repeatedly, we've seen all of the studies, we've talked to our companies, these are the kinds of developments that their companies are looking for to bring in their workforce, that we definitely need to increase, to maintain. One thing, the services that we're currently offering to our residents, but to maintain them and to continue to build on them. And I think that it is a different kind of development than the people who have lived here for a long time are accustomed to, but I think that we will see them using the restaurants, the retail, and other things that are in there, in the park, that is going to be developed as a result of all the other things that we're doing, is going to be terrific amenities for our residents here.
There's no doubt about that, Merrily. My preference would be is to have a better understanding of what the effect of, what's the cost of that tool. That's my way of saying.
Well, and I think Angel has said that she can bring us some, I guess maybe what you're looking for is comparables, if you will, of what other entities similar to us have done, and that's fine. That information will certainly could be readily available.
Yeah, and I apologize, I didn't really answer Rick's question earlier, and I apologize for that. We absolutely can bring back other, what other communities do, and suggestions relative to policy and so forth, and I apologize I didn't answer that earlier, but that's, we can do that.
And I think that'd be fantastic, and as we go forward on these projects, when we're considering that issue of whether to utilize this tool, that we have that analysis before us.
I agree with Rick on that, and actually, Angel, you listed, when you were answering the question, about ten things that would be taken into consideration. So it's just a matter of reducing that into writing, so that, you know, we have a better understanding, and it's in a collective sense, of the kinds of things that would be considered, because you did actually list a variety of them, right?
Yeah, I don't want to rush you there, I want to understand that.
Yeah, sure.
I think we should all understand that.
Okay, anybody else? Is there a motion to treat this as an emergency? Please, thank you. On the motion?
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And Ms. Salee.
Yes.
And thanks to everybody for the input and the lively conversation. So ordinance thirty-four dash fifteen?
Amendment ordinance number fifty-seven ninety-four, passed June twenty nineteen ninety-four, and subsequently amended to supplement the public improvements to be made to benefit the parcels identified in that ordinance.
During introduction? Thank you. Angel?
We are requesting to modify the McHittick TIF that was established in nineteen ninety-four, and it primarily has funded a good portion of Emerald Parkway. And what we would like to do is extend the improvements that would benefit the parcels that are part of this TIF, to include the Riverside Drive realignment, and then more specifically, the intersection of Tuller and Riverside Drive, as well as John Shields Parkway and Riverside Drive.
Very good. Counsel, questions?
I think that's a great idea. Sat on Tuller, trying to make a right-hand turn to make a left-hand turn on Emerald Parkway. Wow, we need to get this done.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else? So there'll be a second reading, public hearing on the May fourth council meeting. Thank you.
The May eighteenth.
I'm sorry, May eighteenth.
Tonight.
Ah, you're right.
Right, May eighteenth.
Huh?
May eighteenth.
May eighteenth.
Yeah, my mistake.
This is the fourth, I've lost track. Okay, resolution forty-five dash fifteen?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an interfeasible right-to-use agreement with PCCW Tele Services U.S. Inc. to utilize fibers within and connect to Dublin facilities.
Introduction, please. And Mr. Garcia.
Members of council, good evening. In front of you is a Dublin IRU with PCCW Tele Services here in Dublin. They are a...
Members of council, good evening. In front of you is a Dublin IRU with PCCW Tele Services here in Dublin. They are a business processing provider doing voice and customer service technical support for global brands. They currently have contracts centers in the U.S., China, Hong Kong, Philippines, Panama, Manila, et cetera. The company is currently located at 565 Metro Place South. Due to new contracts and continued growth, they will be expanding their footprint almost by double. And part of that requires them, they have identified a location on Rings Road, and part of our incentive to them is the Dublin connectivity. So the project will result in the retention of 289 new jobs or existing positions and add approximately 200, so it'll take them just under 500. The, we have a couple representatives here to speak a little more about the company and the value of this project. We have Scott Lee, Vice President Finance, and Jeremy Johnson, the Vice President of Operations.
Welcome, gentlemen. Would you like to address the council? State your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Scott Lee, my residence is 5735 Killery Court. We would very much like to have this opportunity to continue the growth that you gave us last year, to bring in fiber to our temporary location at 495. So this growth would definitely help bring in revenue for the company and bring in close to, close to a million dollars a year in just taxable revenue for the city.
Terrific.
Jeremy Johnston, address 2899 Jamestown Drive. I'd like to echo and thank the council for extending the fiber to our temporary location at 495. That allowed for us to add about 100 employees at that time, bringing us up to 289. We've recently landed a contract with a client allowing us to grow with 200 additional employees. We'd like the council to help us as we move into a new location at, or on Rings Road.
Terrific.
Mike, could we have them in their words just describe briefly what it is that you folks do?
So, as Jeremiah said, we're a business processes outsourcer, but what we really are is an engagement center. So we are providing, we are the voice for a lot of our global companies, as Jeremiah said, providing voice support, so we're the voice on the under end of the line when you make phone calls to some companies that, technology companies, travel companies, et cetera, as well as chat, email, and social media. We see as well expansion into text message customer service as well.
Yeah, the chat thing's really interesting, because more and more of the people that I have to interact to get things done, they put you on the chat line, it actually works pretty good.
Absolutely. Our employees like that better than actually talking on the phone as well, as we begin to hire more millennials.
Yep.
Mayor, I'd just like to add, you know, these gentlemen are pretty modest, really. It's been, it's been fun to watch them grow exponentially very quickly. We were able to work with them on connecting a data center in an existing building while they moved to another building, and here they are moving yet to another building and all through this connectivity piece, but they've been growing, I don't know, I'll say like crazy, because I could probably get away with it, but congratulations on that. It's been fun to watch them.
Definitely, congratulations.
The city of Dublin, the culture is what helps a lot, too, for our clients that are coming in and look at it.
Dana, the 100-gig piece, is that lit up yet, or it's about to be lit?
That's what we're going to talk about next.
That's our next on our agenda.
Yeah, but this is just an amazing story. I mean, as we all know, I mean, you know, please, no offense, but I wouldn't have heard of you folks before, but I mean, it's just amazing, you know, what you've done and the growth that you've experienced and so forth, and, you know, I know we're all proud that, you know, of this expansion and, you know, what's in your future, it's great.
Yep, and as we continue to grow, we're very close to, in the next six to 12 months, filling up that site at Rings Road and needing to expand further, so.
Terrific.
I'm sort of curious, do you have a lot of young employees in your business?
I'd say our average employee is probably 32 or so, but we really look.
Not very young.
Young to me.
So fairly young, yes, but we're looking to diversify from that. We're working with a couple of organizations to bring on veterans into the organization and try to be as diverse as possible, because ultimately, the customers we're serving are diverse.
Yeah, you can see that this city council is trying to create an environment for those young people, too. You know, and we're trying to, you know, create the draw that gets those kind of people into our community.
And as we open our new location, we'd love to have you all come to our ribbon-cutting.
Terrific.
So I might add to the culture, one of their prospective clients actually came and assessed it, and part of our role was to convey them the culture that they could create, this new facility, as well as what the community felt with this, their prospective customers' culture, to make sure that was the right fit, and ultimately, this is the result.
Great, well, thank you. Glad to have you here, thank you. Thank you, good luck, guys. Okay.
Just as a presser, we might be coming back for more later, so.
Mr. Maurer, have you signed up for this?
I was shocked, into probably overreaction, when I read the indemnification paragraph, which is on page 6 of the City of Dublin indefeasable right-to-use agreement. It looks, when I read it, after a while, I realized, I think it's formulaic. This is pretty well probably what an indemnification paragraph would sound like anywhere, but it does sound as if the user, the owner, has at least 120 or 136 percent control over all of this, even to the extent of there being a death on the project. But then, I think buried in the middle of this indemnification paragraph is the phrase, act of negligence or willful misconduct, if that were discerned in the owner, that's enough to rein any owner in. I presume that's the power of this, of this indemnification paragraph.
Well, from a layperson's point of view, I would say that it's a powerful indemnification, or a telecommunications attorney, Mr. Greg Dunn is in the audience, he can address it. But in effect, what we do with these indefeasable right-to-use is allow the company to use our optical fiber system, they never get to own it.
Yeah.
So they'll get to use it for a period of time, it's what we call dark fiber.
Yeah.
They have the responsibility to light it, operate it, maintain it. And as a result, if it, if there is misuse, maintenance issues or so forth of the system which affects their customer, that's, that's their.
Yeah.
Their liability and not the city's. We are just a provider of access to the infrastructure, much the same as we provide a street that you ride on, so.
Yeah, that phrase is buried away in the middle, but it is.
Well, to be clear, the city is the one that's being indemnified.
Right, correct.
The city, we're the owner, we're the ones that are being indemnified.
We're being indemnified.
Not the other way around.
We are the owner?
The city is the owner, yes.
That's right, we're, we're being indemnified for all those bad things that are written in there.
Oh, I better look into this.
It's a pretty standard indemnification agreement.
I better look into this again.
Yeah, take another look, thank you. Okay, is there any other council discussion? If not, Anne?
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Very good, thank you, gentlemen, and we'll look forward to the next 500 employees. Resolution 46-15.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Metro Data Center LLC to create the Dublin 100-gigabit program.
I'll introduce it.
Dana, you jumped ahead there, didn't you?
Okay, yeah, sure. So, good evening, members of council. So as you're aware, the city budgeted in its five-year CIP for 100-gigabit infrastructure program. The city budgeted a total of $865,000 over a six-year period. Will also receive 306, an additional $360,000 in cash from the Ohio Academic Resource Network in exchange for the use of additional fiber optics in the Dublin system, which could be leveraged for this program. You might recall that you approved that previously this year. The city will also receive an additional $300,000, which was approved last year by the state capital budget, that can also be leveraged towards the 100-gigabit project, although those funds will particularly be used to connect what I would call institutional users, such as the Dublin City School System, Washington Township, others of a public nature that want to access it. Leveraging these funds together, the overall intent of the 100-gigabit project is to provide a fiber optic backbone that can operate at 100 gigabits of broadband speed and capacity in order to create, retain, expand, and attract high-tech and broadband-driven industry, businesses, and jobs, while expanding the capabilities of primary and secondary education. So we're pursuing the 100-gigabit-capable infrastructure to do a number of things, which I listed in your staff report, in the staff report I gave you, I won't go through all of those, but I would suggest primarily that it would build upon the city's existing fiber capability by increasing the fiber count, which we've already deployed and have overbuilt portions of the system, which is why we can, we conserve PCCW, extend the fiber optic capability into additional areas that we aren't currently in, and then extend fiber optic capability into our commercial buildings. We'd like to be the place to be for broadband capacity and opportunity to leverage it for development and use. The city could provide access to a research platform, which I'll talk about here in a second, attract high-paying technology jobs, and provide really significant value-added amenity to our legacy office buildings. When you think about the office buildings in Metro Place and really throughout our commercial districts, PCCW is a great example of a company buying an existing building, I'm sure they'll do improvements to it, put their new and expanded employees into, so we're starting, we will see that kind of investment in people wanting to be, be here in order to access this additional infrastructure. So also, the city will extend fiber optic laterals into certain commercial buildings that would help us to achieve that result. We could place routers, equipment into buildings, we could actually achieve what I would call fiber to the cubicle. You hear a lot in the industry and in the world, they're talking about getting fiber to the curb, fiber to the home. Theoretically, we could actually get fiber to the cubicle inside our commercial office buildings, which is pretty unheard of. So the city, in effect, would be able to help its businesses by providing this infrastructure, help them in a way that would enable them to reach back to a local data center, and by doing that, they would access a number of services that I listed out for you in the staff report. For institutional purposes, as I mentioned earlier, we can interconnect schools and other public agencies to the same data center. So really, what happens at the end of the day by providing this physical infrastructure that we call Dublin and leveraging it more to this level, is it actually opens up the opportunity for us to introduce a whole new set of incentive packages to our businesses that we don't currently provide. And I list those in the staff report. Some of those examples, I kind of mentioned them, but it would be to access the 100-gigabit-capable backbone via fiber optic laterals and routers to, that would be placed in buildings, could backhaul companies to the local data center. Once they're there, they can achieve significant avoided costs. They could provide, we could provide server space at no cost for small, medium-sized companies who can't currently house their servers in those kind of environments. I think about our own servers, you remember a couple of years ago, you authorized us to put our servers into that environment. I kind of make fun of IT people, they kind of hate it when I do that, but there's something about IT people that want to look at and see and touch the servers, see the lights blinking or whatever, it means a lot to them, but our small to medium-sized companies, we learned, are much like us, you know, they have to keep their servers in the closet or in the basement or whatever. So this would really enable them to get into an N-plus-two environment that's right here in their own backyard and be able to quickly just drive down the street and access it. So we think that's going to be an off-the-charts kind of incentive that we can offer to local companies. And the other thing I mentioned earlier is the access to a research backbone. So they are companies, and we have companies now that are sitting in their office and running cycle time on the Ohio supercomputer. And to be able to do that, it's something that, when we established the Central Ohio Research Network back in 2005, was something that we wanted to see companies do. So we're starting to see companies do modeling, analytics, prototyping, and simulation from within their own office. That attracts research and development, engineering firms and the like, people who need that high level of cycle time on computers. We can also, it's kind of a rarity for municipalities, but through a partnership we had with a professor out of the Ohio State University, who's now with the University of Missouri, and we still keep in touch with him, we got a grant that provided the National Science Foundation what's called a GENE RAC, or a Global Environment for Network Innovations. So our folks can actually not only access the supercomputer, but they can access this National Science Foundation GENE RAC as well. So we are able to provide a very robust research platform through broadband capability. So what we're proposing here is that the city would enter into a contract with Metro Data Center to provide the day-to-day administration, technical advice, marketing, back-office support to the operations of the 100-gigabit project. So in other words, our economic development staff, and in partnership with Metro Data Center, would go out and offer and sell the incentive, if you will, to local companies, and then Metro Data Center would manage it, provide the technical support, and operate it day-to-day. The incentive piece of this is really our ability to provide the routers, the fiber optics, much like you've been doing through indefeasable rights-to-use, like you just did with PCCW, but we're just going to take that to a higher level. So now we can provide this dark service to bring people back, or a dark fiber access, so that people can be backhauled to the data center and access choice of internet service providers, avoid carrier cost, and access those other things that I just talked about. So I think we do something different that the telecommunications industry is doing now. I think that they will still access all those great telecommunications providers, but they'll be able to access them directly at the data center, as opposed to, you know, at the curb. And then, so I think we're going to do a great service for the telecommunications industry as well by providing quicker and higher-speed access. And actually, I think we help them out in a lot of ways with this. So the other thing that we're asking is that you give us the ability to, to provide this incentive and that we don't come back every time we have one, because we think that companies will be signing on for this pretty routinely. However, we will monitor that, we will provide you reports and make announcements as to when those things happen. The great thing about the, and Rob Kopp is sitting here with Metro Data Center, I want to thank them for the offer of allowing us to do some rental of what they call pod space, which is the server space in their center, setting aside the power. This is a $1.4 million project over three years, but what I appreciate that they did is they said, look, if this isn't achieving the success level at the rate you expect, we can ratchet that back down. So there's a clause in there that allows us to, to better control that. So at the end of the day, we're anxious to promote the implementation of this project as both an infrastructure project and more so as an incentive, and we appreciate your support on that.
Very good. I know a number of us had a chance to go to the Metro Data Center and see that, it's quite impressive, and there's lots of room for growth there as well, so, all good. Council questions, discussion? Here, it's all good stuff, you covered all the ground, Dana. Okay, with that, Anne?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 47-15.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Intelligent Community Forum and its foundation for the purpose of implementing a global institute for the study of the intelligent community in Dublin, Ohio, USA.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Dana?
Thanks again, members of council. This is a really unique opportunity, I think, for the City of Dublin, its economic development team, to host here in Dublin a global institute for the study of the intelligent community. You know that the Intelligent Community Forum, or ICF, is a think-tank that studies the economic and social development of the 21st century community. ICF conducts research, creates conference content, offers educational advisory services, and establishes institutes, and presents annual awards. You know that Dublin has been named an Intelligent Community of the Year, a Smart 21 community globally four times, and we have been a two-time top-seven community. And I just want to emphasize, it's been a couple of years since that's happened, that that is global recognition that we, we receive. The ICF receives about 400 applications for recognition from across the globe by cities across the globe, and to make our way into the Smart 21 four times and then to be named a top-seven and vie for the top spot twice was pretty significant. The Intelligent Community indicators have served as a guidepost for our economic development efforts, as witnessed by the PCCW IRU that you just approved. We focus on broadband connectivity, knowledge, workforce, innovation, digital inclusion, marketing, and advocacy. So what about the study of the intelligent community? We really think that hosting this institute as a programmatic aspect to economic development, again, puts us on the global stage. The ICF, who travels the globe all the time, talking about the intelligent community, of which we are a member and remain a member and are, on their foundation board, we would get that recognition on an ongoing basis at a global level. And we have 400 communities from across the globe applying to be recognized by the ICF annually. I guarantee you, Dublin will always be mentioned in that. The other thing is, I think that we are serving as a lighthouse to other communities as to how to leverage broadband economy. Greg and I just spoke to Yellow Springs, Ohio, I've been down to Athens, Ohio, just recently, talking to them, we're working with Marysville on a potential fiber optic run up the 33 corridor. There's just a lot of activity going on there. There's just a lot of activity going on there. People look to us as to how we do it, and I think this institute is a great way to promote that and bring people together. I have had a telecommunications working group that consists of all the different folks and types of folks that I listed in the staff report. We've used that for years. So I really see this as almost in the too-easy column. We would essentially buy a license for this, but we would use that same telecommunications working group to promote the broadband community and the intelligent community. And I think that we would continue to raise our awareness of Dublin and what we contribute worldwide, so.
Council questions?
I think it's a terrific opportunity. And I think we need to be leveraging this kind of thing a lot more than we ever have. And I was actually surprised, it's been four years since we were in those top categories. I assume we must not have applied. I know it's challenging to apply every year, but this is... Really does make us different from other communities. And our intelligence in this area and the companies that we know are here because of this kind of thing and can expand and their businesses as a result of this kind of a benefit to them is just terrific. And I'd like to see us really leverage that a bit more publicly as setting us apart from other communities. Thank you.
So the scope of the people that will be involved in this in terms of the collaborative working group would be Central Ohio, Ohio, regional? Who would be... You're citing schools, corporations, municipalities, et cetera?
Yeah, I would continue to build on the working group we have, which is pretty basic. It's the city of Dublin, it's our consulting team. I've invited other communities within the region to participate that off and on. The official company has been involved in that because they understand the technology side of it. But you know, the interesting thing about this is that, you know, I've done webinars and web-based presentations to Arlington, Virginia, which is vying for the top spot this year. They've actually modeled some of what they're doing in Arlington, Virginia, against what we've been doing. So I could see us increasing the collaboration. I'd like to see us working on what they call the rural imperative, so like working with Yellow Springs and Athens. We have rural communities trying to leverage this. We have the suburban model down pretty tight, I think. I think we could work with the city of Columbus, who is vying again for the top spot this year globally as the number-one intelligent community. And I think that they could do the urban model. I do think that we have the opportunity to get universities involved in this, be they the Ohio State University or Ohio University to some degree. So I think it's a programmatic aspect we can grow on.
Very good. Anybody else? All right. Mr. Mauer?
Yeah, I want to applaud the city manager for, if he achieves this, as terrific achievement to host the ICF here in Dublin. I have a little picky thing about it in the context of the issue. I have to go again into a linguistic thing every so often. If you look, please, at the memo, page two, on the section, under the section, "Why would the city of Dublin want to host a global institute?" Tell me if you see anything. Now, I say that this might be picky, but we have to be very careful. The eyes are on us all the time now. Do you find anything, at least momentarily, confusing in the following? If you look at, under that section entitled, "Why should the city of Dublin want to host a global institute," lines two to three, the latter part of line two and the first part of line three, where we read... Now, do you see anything momentarily, at least, confusing here? "The city of Dublin has and continues to prosper in the broadband economy."
You went prospered in there, past tense? Has prospered and continues to prosper?
No, no, not necessarily.
Okay.
Don't keep us guessing.
Yeah, let us know.
Don't keep us guessing. Just tell us.
All right. "The city has..." What, what, what? "...and continues to prosper in the broadband economy." Now, I won't take time to ask for improvements. I'll give you two possible improvements. Is that okay? All right. "The city of Dublin has..." Comma. "...and continues to prosper in..." Comma. "The broadband economy." Or, "The city of Dublin achieved broadband, the broadband economy, and continues to prosper in that achievement," or something like that. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I always did horrible with my commas. Always.
I'll send you my bill.
Please, okay?
Okay.
We're looking for a comment.
Oh, I have another observation here.
Okay.
In the big picture, Dublin in the development of technology and economy, in the big picture, that is, of course, that's achieved. That is not... That is not an end point. That is the basis for other things to happen. The achievement of the technology makes possible other things that can come. For example, a symptom of that is, we have a good, strong economy and the technology well-developed. You know, the Greeks and the Romans had one too. It was called slavery. But we had... And this one is economic achievement, and it's a basis for things to happen. A symptom, of course, of that, as you were mentioning earlier, look, there are things culturally achieving. A symptom of what would be coming out of this basis is, for example, the Dublin Arts Center. That's an example. Without the economic background, it's unlikely that we would have had anything like that.
Agreed. We're all on board with that.
All right.
All right. Thank you. I've lost track here, but I think we're on a vote. Thank you.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes. And thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Toller Flats, preliminary and final flats, staff report. Ms. Shelley? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of council. Trying to make it up on the screen. Before you, we have a request for approval of the preliminary and final plat for the multifamily development of a 20.44-acre site that's known as Toller Flats. This proposal includes new public streets and 14 blocks of development. For some background, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed and approved the development plan and the site plan, and reviewed and made a recommendation for approval by city council on the preliminary and final plats on March 12th. City council has approved the rezoning for a portion of the site from Bridge Street corridor public district to residential district on April 27th. The project involves a subdivision of lots seven, eight, nine, and 10 to address issues of current ownership and land transfer, and will provide for 14 blocks and 16 developable lots with new public right-of-ways. The street sections included as part of the preliminary plat include lane width, sidewalks, dimensions, planting areas. The roads to be platted are John Shields Parkway, which is a signature street, and the neighborhood streets of Watson, Deardorff, McCune, and Graham. At the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, reviewed the proposed preliminary and final plat on March 12th and recommended approval to city council with one condition, that the applicant ensures that any minor technical adjustments be noted on the report are made prior to the final review by city council. This condition has already been addressed by the applicant to the satisfaction of planning and engineering. At the direction of the legal counsel, the applicant provided the required bond within 30 days of approved plat to the satisfaction of the city engineer. The staff currently recommends that city council approve the preliminary and final plats with the addition of the proposed condition. Are there any questions?
Very good. Counsel? Mr. Lecliter?
Yes, and I may misunderstand where we are in the process here, but in reading the record, I don't know whether it was staff or whether it was members of the Planning and Zoning Commission expressed concerns, a number of them concerned, but a couple that jumped out to me were the use of vinyl windows throughout the project. I don't know how that's being addressed or if it's resolved. The other one was the use of a siding that was described as "boral siding," if I'm pronouncing it correctly.
Correct. Both of those items were in the original applications, and the applicant, who's here with us, John, if he wants to speak, but they withdrew both of those items and replaced them with windows and siding that was code-compliant, so it's no longer a waiver that was on the table.
That's all I needed to hear. Thank you.
That's great. Very good. John?
No, nothing.
Anybody else? Mr. Mauer? Yep.
This is not snooty or fussy, but look on page three, paragraph two, under recommendation conditions. See that? Paragraph three, page three, paragraph two. Recommended conditions. It's fracturing under two patterns of organizing thought here. Let me give you the answers, and then you can see what I'm driving at. Recommended conditions, if you have a word "that" understood there, recommended conditions "that the applicant answer to the applicant provide." Or, if you have recommended conditions, one, the applicant answers, the applicant provides. That's all. See what I'm driving at there? No? Yes? I'll give you a seminar in it tomorrow.
All right. I'm lost, but thank you.
I did have a question on the second condition. Have they complied with that, or when are they required to comply with that?
They're required to post the bond within 30 days of this approval.
Of this approval?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. In a second?
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
All right, very good. Thank you. I know Mr. Reiner needs to leave. He's a new grandpa.
Oh.
Uh-huh.
Oh, congratulations.
He's in hospital for close.
Congrats, yeah.
A new Reiner, a new Reiner in the world.
Oh, boy.
Okay. With that, Dana, staff comments?
Just a couple of items. First of all, Angel, Terry, and I attended the Washington Township trustee meeting this last week. I thought we had a really good dialogue, good line of questions from the township trustees. Between Michelle and I, we will... Michelle Crandall and I, we will be attending their meetings going forward. Again, good dialogue. We committed to share data with Sarah Ott, the township administrator, and we will work through any concerns or issues that they have. Reassured them that any actions we would take would not be intended to harm them in any way, but we would monitor, you know, the growth and possibility of projects and what impacts those may have. So I think we have a great dialogue going on with the township on that. Speaking of grandparents, and it's funny because I wrote this down earlier, but I just wanted to congratulate Chief Von Eckersberg, who's the grandfather now of twins, in case you didn't know that. And then the last item is that the employer supported the Garden Reserve. The city received an award two Saturdays ago. It was a very high-level employer supported the Garden Reserve. You were nominated by Staff Sergeant Alex Rozansky, who is on duty right now. I have asked that our reserve employees that are in the Garden Reserve attend your May 18th meeting to present you with that trophy that you received. I think it's important that they do that, and I hope that's okay, that they are on your agenda under...
Absolutely.
...presentation. So that's all I have this evening.
Okay. We have committee reports, planning and zoning. Amy?
The only thing that I have is Plan and Commission meets Thursday night with another full agenda.
Very good. Rick, admin? And nothing from John on community development. Merrily, finance?
The Tax and Center Review Committee meets tomorrow at 4:00. Thank you.
Amy, public services?
Yes, and it's unfortunate John had to run, but I'm sure Ann can communicate with him. We're trying to schedule a public services committee meeting. Ann sent us some potential dates, Tim, of May 20th, May 26th, and June 10th. Do any of those not work for you? Okay, get back with Ann, and between the three of us, Ann, if you could help me herd the cats, we'll get that scheduled. Thank you.
Very good. Greg, Board of Education?
Nothing to report.
Morphine, Merrily?
No.
US 33? Nothing new there. Counsel roundtable. Greg?
I attended the Wedgwood Homeowners Association meeting last week, and a couple of questions came up. Staff was, as usual, extremely responsive and got me answers to the questions. One question that came up, in no-build zones that are in residential developments, does the city enforce those, or is it the HOA that enforces those, or does it depend? Is that not a fair question?
The city enforces those zones.
Okay. Okay. I will forward on that information to the appropriate people. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
I do not have anything to share with the group. Thank you.
Very good. Merrily?
The only question I have, or not question, but comment, I see that Ward One is going to be meeting with Paul and respective staff next week, and a number of questions by one of their participants has been raised in this lengthy agenda that I think council really needs to be seeing what the staff is going to be saying to the homeowner group before they get it. So presumably, since we have a council meeting next week beforehand, we could get that information that the staff are going to be giving them anyway.
Yes, we can share with you the presentation that we intend to do that evening. And I apologize, that was not on your calendar. We should make sure that those are on your collective calendar, so if you choose to attend those. That will be at the 5800 Building. Yeah, so we'll show you, give you a copy of the presentation Monday.
Tim?
Thank you. I wanted to suggest that while the Public Services Committee is considering the HOA space maintenance issues, that I'd like to refer a conceptually similar matter to the committee for consideration. Specifically, I'm speaking of, I believe it's called the Woods of Dublinshire, or you may know it as Capitalstone Lane, and the issue of a private street versus a public street. As you all know, Capitalstone is a private street with relatively significant maintenance responsibility falling to, I don't know how many residents, it's somewhere between 30 and 40, I think. The HOA leadership has met with our staff, including Michelle Crandall, Paul Hammersmith, and Jennifer Reedler. On a number of occasions over the last year, I participated in at least a couple of those meetings and also met with them separately to discuss options. During the course of this last year, staff has engaged in fairly exhaustive analysis, such that I don't think there'd be... I hope I can speak for staff, that I don't think there'd be a lot more preparation necessary to present this to the Public Services Committee. So, you know, I think it dovetails somewhat with this HOA maintenance issue. There are similar issues. They have their distinctions, but I would, you know, make that recommendation. I think it's best fleshed out at the committee level.
I'm not opposed to any stretch of the imagination, but we do have a report of many private streets in the city. So they're not the only private street that end up with this incredible responsibility financially. And almost all these private streets are very small number of housing, as opposed to the big developers that made, you know, larger residents. So is the committee going to address it as a policy holistically for the community, not just one? Because that would be, you know, it seems to me that's an unfair situation to address it only in one area.
Merrily, I mean, I don't... I think it's going to be a matter, to some degree, how you perceive it. You know, I think that where Capitalstone is concerned, it's somewhat unique. Now, you may not agree, but I think, and I don't want to speak for staff, but if you see their analysis, I don't think that it is a situation that's capable of repetition but for maybe one or two other instances. But that's some of what the staff analysis will reveal to us. And you may or may not agree.
So you're proposing flushing it out at the committee level and then bringing it forward? Because I think it does seem a bit unfair not to treat all your children the same.
Right, but we can look at this and see, you know, the comparisons and the categories and those kinds of things.
I've had a couple of discussions with Megan, Public Works Director, on this and their preparation... and their preparation, depending on when you wanted to bring this forward. And I do know that, that their assessment is looking broadly, as well as this one, but also looking at what others are similar or in what type of situation they were. So should, we'll be prepared to, to bring forward a holistic view of those, of all of those, and if there is uniqueness relative to this one, then certainly can address it that way or, or not.
You may recall, I've had some heartburn for a number of years over some of the perimeter, for instance. We have private roads back there that are in many, many places in great disrepair. It seems to me a rather similar issue, but on the commercial side versus the residential side. Maybe that needs to be looked at as well, as far as policy going forward, so that we don't put ourselves in that, in that same boat. Maybe we can't, you know.
Mary Lee is on to something. We talked about this three, four years ago, of staff coming back to us with some ideas with respect to, for policy considerations on these private streets.
Residential.
Yeah, residential. And I appreciate Tim and because that one is certainly one that needs to be looked at. But I think while we're at it, let's look at the others as well. And it makes sense that that goes to a committee.
The, one thing, Mike, I would say about the commercial roads, some of them that I think I, I know you're referring to because I have hit those holes a few times, you know? But I will say that as soon as I've taken pictures and notified the staff, that they have gotten on the owners of those areas and the problem is that they patch them. And so, you know, after any winter weather or something, then, then you've got it all a problem again, rather than tearing it down and rebuilding the road. So then you continue to have this problem you're speaking of.
Well, we've got the site, slightly issued as well.
Right, yeah.
Over many years.
Absolutely, yeah.
You only patch so often, so.
Well, while we're on the subject, I mean, on that subject, I mean, I almost disappeared in a pothole, you know, over the weekend, you know, there by the Chase Bank, between Donato's. I mean, I can't believe, you know, maybe they have, you know, some repairs scheduled, but, you know, we're, we're into that season and, you know, it doesn't appear as though, you know, any improvements are imminent, but anyway. Did you have?
No.
I was, I was going to move on.
Okay, move on. I think that we'll schedule that committee meeting.
I'm sure you'd like me to. Thank you. Also, this was touched on, I believe that was our last meeting or maybe the meeting before, but in light of the pending Riviera application, there was some reference to an application, whether it's been filed yet or not, but is anticipated with respect to Autumn Rose. And then, as I was thinking about this issue, I remembered the recently approved rezoning, I think, at Highland, Croydon, Brand on the northwest corner. And the similarity that is shared between all of these, of course, is that, you know, there are applications for single-family homes, you know, which I would argue that we have more than enough of. You know, it's certainly available in abundance outside our city boundaries in Jerome Village, for one example. But Mary Lee, I think it was you that suggested that, I don't want to put, this is my, I'm making this proposal, I guess, but I, I want to give you credit, you know, because I think you suggested that maybe this is a policy discussion that we should have. And I, and I guess the reason I'm raising this is to move that forward. I, I don't know the means by which we get there. I, you know, people will probably start throwing things at me. I don't know whether it would necessarily necessitate, you know, revisiting some portion of the community plan. I don't know how we do this. I just wanted to put it out there, you know, for discussion.
You know, I, I agree. I think we need to have a bigger discussion on this. And the community plan is probably a good vehicle because everybody can get it, you know, and, and be reading the same thing. Another discussion we had had, and maybe it was in the context of the community plan, both original and then updates of it, is how big do we want to become? And we never really answered that question because it seemed so far away, I think, at the time. But now we're already at 45,000 people. And if you look at the land that we have available to be built out into residential, where does that take us? Depend, you know, and if we made this decision, it would take us here, and if we made these, it would take us there. I mean, I don't know the answers to that, but I think it is, that kind of information would be helpful. But then what happens? You know, what's the legal issue? If I own land and I'm a developer, how can I be stopped from developing? It's, I always understood that what our control was, was density, these kind of things, you know? But to prohibit someone from building, I didn't think we were legally allowed to do that. Am I dreaming this or?
Right. Well, rezonings need to be in accordance with the community plan. And so complete prohibitions, you know, isolated moratoriums are one thing, but we need to refer to the community plan. So that may be a good vehicle for what you're discussing.
There was a moratorium out in the Pickerington area at one point, and I think there was a suit built by the builders exchange or not.
We're very familiar with that.
I don't think you're talking about a moratorium. I think it's talking about
No, it sure sounds like it. Yeah, it sounds like it.
No, 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 no. I, I think that the, the, the other part of this discussion is the, the type of, of, you know, housing that we want to encourage. And, you know, we've been hearing for years, you know, that there is no place for the empty nesters to go. And, and, you know, it seems to me that we haven't done anything really affirmatively to encourage that. And I don't think that, that all of the empty nesters necessarily will find the, the solution, you know, to this issue in the Bridge Street District and multi-story living. Certainly that's going to appeal to some, you know, but, you know, I'm thinking that, you know, in some of these areas, you know, that might otherwise be designated for single-family residential, you know, would, you know, it would be a variation of single-family residential targeted at a particular audience, or at least encouraged, you know, such that it would attract that kind of audience, which I think exists here in Dublin in abundance. And, and, you know, we've all seen the demographic studies, it's just going to increase. And, you know, I'd really like to provide our residents, you know, we've been saying with respect to Bridge Street, for example, you know, how, you know, people, you know, born in this community, raised in this community, you know, can, can live through all the different phases of their life in this community. But, you know, you know, we're finding an awful lot of people. We all know them, you know, that, that, you know, at a certain point in their lives, you know, when they reach, you know, I'm just going to arbitrarily choose, you know, 60-plus, you know, there, many of them are moving out of our community because the product isn't available to them.
Yeah, I would offer that, you know, your opportunity to influence that is narrowing as, you know, obviously as you look at what's left outside the commercial areas for residential development. I think we had done a little bit of analysis, we shared with you in preparation for your retreat, showed the number of, assuming a certain level of density, how many more housing is, houses that can generate with 33 corridor dialogue. We even reached out into the Jerome Township area to just try to understand what that might generate, which then invites a discussion with the schools. And I think it's a great opportunity for, as well as Washington Township and others. So as we do, that kind of analysis might lend itself to that greater discussion as well that you all talked about at your retreat. So not to complicate or throw a lot of other things into the, into the mixing bowl, but certainly that partnership is critical as to the housing types and so forth. So we, we've done some leaning forward on that, so we could, I think, probably tee that conversation up with some background.
I'm not opposed to a conversation, but I'm a very strong believer in market forces personally. That's just my, that's, that's a view I have, determining, you know, what needs, what, what needs the community might have. Certainly we can impact it, but I think market forces are very strong.
Well, with all due respect, Mike, I mean, you know, we're trying to influence the market with respect to Bridge Street. I mean, you know, there's a demand for it, but I mean, you know.
We all agree, but I think the market's dictating that as well, or they wouldn't be there in the first place.
But, you know, you look up in Jerome Township, in, in Jerome Village, I should say, and you see the market forces. And that's not the dream that I have for my community to build out. I don't want to see, you know, more of the same, you know, neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood of single-family, you know, four-bedroom, five-bedroom family homes. That's going to overburden our school district, you know, more so than they already are. In the southwest, you know, we've got a huge swath of land that's Hilliard School District. You know, I don't know that they feel necessarily different than Dublin schools about, you know, growth and, and, you know, certainly we know that they try to prepare, but, you know, I think they appreciate being included in that discussion as well, so.
Well, why don't we figure out the proper vehicle, bring some ideas back to us, Dana?
Yeah, I feel a work session perhaps.
Some, some combination thereof of discussion and community plan and overview.
I would appreciate it.
Well, if, if I could, since I am the representative of the Planning Commission, and I noticed that we have a couple of applications that are going to be before us in the form of, I guess, probably concept plans. I see. One and one. Is Autumn Rose a concept? Okay. So, you know, I, I am curious what message I can take back to the Planning Commission as we review that and, and, you know, and.
Well, of course, you're saying, Jennifer's saying that if it's consistent with our community plan.
Yeah. Yeah, I said be careful with that.
That one factor.
Yeah.
There's one factor. Yeah, in planned districts, I, I want to say there are 16 different sets of criteria that we look at. And so there's a lot of flexibility to examine those and apply those to the specific situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Finally, I attended, I guess, you would describe it as a public rollout of the drug drop-off box last Friday at the Justice Center with the chief and other staff. You know, again, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity. I'm glad to see that we're involved. The ACT organization was there and represented, as was Dublin Schools, the superintendent attended. Ohio University's Dean Burke was in attendance as well. And there was a representative there, I believe a pharmacist from Kroger. And hopefully I get this right, but my understanding is that they're going to be making their customers aware of this opportunity, if you will, if you want to call it that, you know, as, as they fill their prescriptions, I guess, and so forth. So that will help to get the word out as well. So that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I would hope all of our pharmacies in town would, would take advantage of that opportunity to let customers know. I mean, that would, that would be great information for everybody to have.
Very, very good. Rick?
Very quickly, I forget the gentleman's name who presented to us from Morpsy at the, at our retreat.
William Riner.
Yes, thank you. He was present at Rotary AM in Dublin this Friday and basically gave the same presentation. And, and in my opinion, it's a wonderful presentation. It lays out, you know, the growth pattern, the projected growth pattern as, as studied by Batel and various universities and others across the country. And where growth in central Ohio, unfortunately, we are going to grow, unlike other parts of the state over the next 15, 20 years, but he was liking the, the growth to that of the 80s through the 90s. And I was watching the crowd and they're, they were very intent and I think they all walked away with a new perspective of what we in central Ohio are going to be facing and also what we are doing here on Bridge Street. So I just wanted to share that because it was very well-received and very well-done by him. Also, Sandra and her staff distributed flyers with respect to I-270 and Route 33 and other ways we can kind of maneuver around town over the next few months, maybe a few years. And I appreciate that because I've seen those at other businesses and they are getting out there.